District Regulation Section 12 General Commercial District C dash one B three as it relates to the outdoor display and storage of general farm implements and lawn care equipment, riding lawnmowers and related accessories, Farragut Lawn and Tractor applicant. And as I said, for discussion purposes only, we will not be voting on this tonight.
Yeah, this property is located actually in Loudoun County. It's located at one three, one through one Kingston Pike. And on the north side of Kingston Pike. The, this building on the screen was issued a certificate of occupancy in April two thousand seven. You might remember their original building just to the east, smaller building. So when we issued the certificate of occupancy in two thousand seven, it was conditioned on the outdoor storage and display being in compliance. And so we, we had some issues with that and we worked with the property owner after the issuance of the CO to actually develop the language that's in the ordinance currently. And that was adopted in January of two thousand eight. And just as a summary, that language, which is part of the general commercial zoning district, basically talks about, it provides a list of criteria dealing with farm businesses that have farm implements and lawn care equipment because of their kind of unique needs and characteristics in relation to maybe other uses permitted in C one. So one of the conditions is dealing with the outdoor storage and display. That is required to be behind the rear building plane, which you can't even see in this picture. It would be pretty far back. The second condition dealt with basically ensuring that there was no equipment being stored or displayed on sidewalks or walkways or other vehicular ways like it is right there on the screen. The third condition dealt with a recognition that these, these kinds of businesses are going to have temporarily a situation where there's equipment being unloaded and unpackaged. That's understandable. But that's very different from being displayed on a longer term basis, once that's been unpackaged and delivered, you know, to the, to the site. There's some language dealing with the packaging materials being stored in an area designed for those. And basically that if you're going to have outdoor display, the merchandise that is to be in a, in an area that's designed for that, a permanent covered area, and that's what that green roofed area is on the right there of the screen. That was the approved display area for this business. So that's where they can put their, you know, products to be displayed for sale and not really anywhere else with the current language. So the problem has been really for years, frankly, that this language is not being followed. These slides pretty much show what's, what's happening out there is that the material is being stored and displayed in areas that are well beyond the area that was designed and approved for that. So this ultimately recently ended up in a citation to court. The applicant I had talked with and basically said that, you know, you do have to go by the language that we have in place, but you certainly, as anyone does, have the ability to request a text amendment and, you know, take that through the process and present your case, what you want to do and, and see where it goes. So that's kind of how we got to this point. They've really got a couple of issues that they were cited for, the, the display issue that we're dealing with tonight with the zoning ordinance provisions and then, then a sign violation where they take a gator with a sign in the back and they pull it up near Kingston Pike and use it essentially as a vehicular sign, which is not allowed in the sign ordinance. And I've mentioned to the applicant that they certainly have the ability to apply for a compliant ground mounted sign. They have applied for one and had one approved in the past, but never put it up for some reason. And then also they could have a, a building mounted sign as well. So there's some opportunities in terms of signage, but that's not really what's before you tonight. Really what's before you tonight is the request to amend the language of the zoning ordinance to allow essentially for the status quo, what's been going on, on this site for, for a while. So again, I'm just going to check some of these pictures. What I would say is, as you, as you all know, in terms of outdoor storage and display, it's, it's been kind of, you know, a, a standard of the towns. It's in its ordinances that if you're going to have or want to have outdoor storage and display, that you need to have that in an area that's contained so that the material's not just scattered randomly throughout the site. That's what we did with Gander Mountain on Parkside Drive when they were in town. They had an outdoor area that was designed and approved where they put their canoes and other products, but they did not put those out near Parkside Drive or out beyond that defined area. So that's kind of the issue. You know, we're not, I'm open to options, but the, the main issue here is that this is, you know, just random and scatting this material is being placed all over the front, including over the sidewalk constantly. You couldn't walk from the sidewalk along Kingston Pike to the entrance of the building because it's typically blocked by equipment. As you all know, this is, this is an entrance way into the town from the west, from Loudoun County. This does kind of create a cluttered effect as you come into the town. So, you know, that's, that's kind of the issue, that the text amendments that the applicants requesting would basically allow them to do what they're doing right now for all practical purposes, that the display wouldn't really be essentially regulated. So we would not support that broad of a text amendment at this time.
Mark, before we move on, could you explain the town limits down in that area?
Well, the town limits go all the way down to Harrison Road, which is just west of the gas station on the north side of Kingston Pike. You look at this image right here, the green is the John Deere building. Then you've got an old grandfather auto repair shop, and then you've got the gas station. And that's the last tract on the north side of Kingston Pike in town, even though those tracks are in Loudoun County. On the south side, the nursery, for example, is not in the town. The first building on the south side of Kingston Pike is the Y twelve credit union.
Anybody have any questions or comments?
I do, whenever I get an opportunity.
Go, go ahead.
Well, Mark has laid out a lot of information for you and, and has a lot of documentation. What has not been said is I need to give you a little background on this. I've been a John Deere dealer in the town of Farragut for twenty-nine years. Matter of fact, twenty-nine years today. I bought this property that you're talking about from the town of Farragut in nineteen and ninety-four. And at that time, the town of Farragut placed no restrictions whatsoever in my use of that property as a John Deere dealership. For thirteen years, I used that property to display, show equipment, not store equipment, but to display and show temporarily equipment. In two thousand six, we started approving the building and have a very nice facility if you drive by and come in and take a look at it. And we completed it and opened for business January the first two thousand seven as a John Deere dealer. But at that time, the existing Farragut staffer, who's no longer with the town, would not give us an occupancy permit because she didn't want to have any outdoor display of equipment. As a John Deere equipment dealer or any equipment dealer, you cannot tolerate that. So over a period of months, back and forth before the planning commission and also before the Board of Mayor and Alderman, we negotiated a compromise that Mark just described to you about how we display our equipment. In the process, subsequent to that time, in our operations, we found out it's almost impossible in the daily activities that conduct in our business with our customers and not, we have to move the equipment in and out of our showroom across the area that he shows right there, right now. In and out, we do that in the morning and we bring it back in at night. If you drive by the dealership at this time, you won't see a single thing out here, nor will you see it on the weekends or any other time. It's only during our business hours from eight in the morning to five at night. We do not store equipment as has been alleged out here. It's temporarily parked out here. Sometimes we have to move this equipment out of our showroom in order to clean and polish the floor. And we do in fact, put it up. As a matter of fact, the picture you're seeing right now is a result of us doing that. There are other times that we move the equipment out there and we have done so since the onset of the virus. We evacuate the showroom in order to prevent congregation of customers around the equipment in the showroom, as many as ten, fifteen people congregating around equipment. So we had to move it outside during this period of time to prevent the congregation of people around our equipment. In this case, it's a protection for our customers and for our employees. I realize at the time, it's a violation of the existing ordinance, but it's something that I had to do. Matter of fact, it has been done with the town's approval in, in, in years past. For example, during the construction phase of Dixley Junction reconstruction for about two and a half years, there was no enforcement by the town at that time of us displaying our equipment out front during business hours. So the, the enforcement has been totally inconsistent and what I want to do is try to get some language that allows us to do our job very efficiently, not to be oppressive and abusive to anybody as far as displaying of equipment or inconvenience to anybody, but get language in the ordinance that allows us to have the flexibility to take our equipment in and out without citing, you know, a problem with the town. Now, just for example, the type of equipment that we sell and display out there is the very type of equipment that you see on your parks and out in front of the town hall to mow your grass, everything. Matter of fact, the town of Farragut has been one of my biggest customers and it's a mutual beneficial arrangement for the town and for us. We take area equipment, we give you priority on the service, we give you discounted sales that you can't get anywhere else, and that's pretty much my contribution to the town of Farragut. And in the process, we have been able to stay in business for twenty-nine years when during two thousand and seven, the economic downturn, there were dealerships similar to mine, they were going out of business all across the country. But we, we enjoy doing business in town of Farragut. We have a lot of good customers. We have over seventeen thousand customers on our data base and our computers that we've done business with in our twenty-nine years. And matter of fact, many of the people that I'm talking to right now are our customers. And I think all of you will agree that you get top notch service from our dealership. I wish that I could get some consideration from you folks to allow us to, some way to where it's acceptable to you and also acceptable to me that we can have some flexibility in our operations on this. I point out that, that we are growing, our sales are growing. We not only sell here to the people in East Tennessee, we have shipped equipment to our armed forces in Afghanistan and Iraq, some equipment that you never see. And we ship equipment to government agencies all over the United States. So it's been a good business for us. We enjoy doing business here. It'd be a lot more enjoyable if I didn't have to deal over and over with this situation with this equipment in out front. Matter of fact, as an example, the type of equipment that we sell, if I'm out mowing my grass out in front of the dealership, and I've had this happen, I get a call and I've got to go in, I leave the equipment outside and somebody comes around from the town and says, oh, there's a piece of equipment out front here, that's in violation of the ordinance. And in fact, it is. And I want to prevent things like that from happening. Matter of fact, if as I move equipment into and out of the, out of the building, through that door that you see under that covered area there, why, every time I take it to the grass, it's a violation of your ordinance. We need to find some way that's acceptable to you and acceptable to me to allow us to have the flexibility through our day to day operations. And I appreciate you listening to me rant and rave for this period of time. Thank you.
Anybody have any questions or comments?
This is Commissioner Myers. I have a comment. I've, I've known Mr. Davis for twenty-five years and in those twenty-five years, I bet I've driven by hundreds of John Deere dealerships and tractor dealerships across this country. And his is an exception, being that it is probably the most organized and neatly kept dealership of any of the dealerships I've seen all, and that's from Alabama to Washington. And I do think that common sense would prevail, that if you're in the lawn and landscape and tractor and farm implement business, we should have some way for an individual to be able to display his equipment as well as a individual be able to come in and test the equipment. I personally tested some of his equipment there and I think that surely there's some common sense here that we come up with. I do think that Mr. Davis could probably make an effort to not block the sidewalks and keep his equipment in the grass areas, and I suspect that he, he would be amenable to do so, but it seems like that, that the, the teeth of this ordinance is a little overreaching.
This is Commissioner St. Clair. I would echo Noah's comments. I think that though, we ought to kind of look hard at this sign in the back of the gator though. I think maybe, you know, we have sent him a compromise that we could work out here. Also I'm mindful of what's across the street and relative to, it's also at the entrance of the town, but we have no control over. Now, this is kind of a unique situation at our entrance and I think we ought to work with Mr. Davis to work a compromise here relative to what's good for him and good for us.
And I'll add, I agree with what Commissioner St. Clair and Commissioner Myers are saying. I think the, the big issue to me is we've got to resolve the sign situation, which is separate from the other issues he's dealing with. And obviously I have not been around long to know, understand the history and I do not test farm equipment, so I haven't the first clue as to what goes into that. So I'm going to defer and really look to Commissioner Myers because you know what you're looking at, you know what you're talking about. I would like to know that we're, we're trying to keep, maintain things neatly and the sign issue is the biggest issue to me.
Well, I'd like for you to come out at any time. I'd certainly entertain you. I'd, I'd appreciate if you would. So you are my Alderman, by the way. I'd be glad to have you out here.
And that, but I don't need to be at a John Deere dealership. My husband would kill me with something that we don't need.
This is Commissioner Green. As I read the requested change, it pretty much gives the owner unlimited ability to put as many pieces of equipment out there as possible and are always setting a bad precedent for other types of businesses that want to display things out in the front. It looks like there's, it looks like there's some risk there for other businesses.
I agree with Commissioner Green. I'm always saying we open up Pandora's box when we don't follow the ordinance and I think this is the case, that we, if we allow one business to do this, then another business has a good argument of why can't I put my product out like we did at, at Gander Mountain? They spent quite a bit of money building a area to put their outdoor equipment in. So I, I totally agree with Commissioner Green on the fact that we're opening up Pandora's box for other businesses to want to put their products outside too.
This is Commissioner Green again. I think I heard Mr. Davis asking for a compromise. I don't think I hear a compromise in the wording. It just gives him carte blanche permission to put as much equipment out front as he'd like. Perhaps a compromise would be a couple of pads, concrete pads in the area that would somewhat limit how much equipment is going to be out in the front. I don't exactly know the perfect solution, but I think the wording as proposed is not a compromise, it's just a blanket approval of what he, what he'd like to do and as much equipment out in the front as he chooses to.
I'm not asking for that. I'm asking, you know, for consideration. Be happy to talk to him. I've asked for the town staff to come out and take a look at the way we have to operate. As of yet, I haven't got anybody to come out, but I would appreciate anybody on the commission and the town staff get out and, and show you how we operate and why, and I'm not interested in putting twenty pieces of equipment out front, but I am asking for the flexibility of moving people across the front on a, in the morning and that, that during the business hours. And if you take a look at this area photograph, what I'm dealing with, you're talking about me displaying equipment, but it took right to the west of me, there's an automobile dealership, automobile repair facility that's got a lineup of old wrecked cars right past that and you've done nothing about them. Secondly, right across the street, you've got the outdoor storage of about two acres of plants and it's a great place, but a lot of it is in the town of Farragut area. Some of it's in Loudoun County, some of it's in Knox County. But I am surrounded by people who have outdoor storage and outdoor sales. And, you know, I'd like to have some, some level of the playing field, as you might say.
This is Commissioner Green again. I understand what you're saying, but in changing the ordinance, we aren't just satisfying your needs, we're actually opening the door to anyone else. And the business, you may sell the business someday and the next owner may define a little differently than you. Let me continue. Mark, the property next door with all the cars, did I hear you say that's grandfathered and we're kind of limited in what we can do there?
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's a different, I agree that it's an eyesore. I'm not, I don't disagree with Mr. Davis on that, but it is grandfathered in and it's not display material, it's, it's products that are being worked on, being serviced. We kind of have that in a couple other auto places in the town, but it's, it's not display material like what's being considered at this time. This location, actually, we developed the ordinance specifically for this type of use and set back in two thousand and eight. The nursery on the south side of Kingston Pike is not in the town, none of that is in the town. So that, the first piece of property that's in the town on the south side is the Y twelve federal credit union. But that's not, that's not something we have control over.
Mark, what you need to do is come out, come out and take a look at it and there, they are storing stuff in Knox County in the town of Farragut Limits. I see it every day, every single day.
I would say you're exactly right, Wayne, because I was down there to buy an Zellier the other day and I noticed this particularly specifically with my own eye. I think this, I don't think we're setting a precedence that we can work a, a compromise in this area because this is not something that applies to every area in the town.
I think probably if you was going to look at, at maybe some kind of a compromise to me, the, the issue I see is that you, you need to have a defined space for this stuff. It can't just be scattered everywhere and undefined. So you need to have some kind of railing, fencing or something that actually encloses a space for that. It could be perhaps to the east of the existing covered area or east and west potentially, but don't go any closer to Kingston Pike than the front of the existing covered area. And that would give them additional space on each side of that. But it would have to be, you know, fenced or walled in or something to where you could still see the product, but it would be in a defined space because if you don't do that, it's, it's not something that is enforceable. It's hard to, I mean, you know, they're just, people are going to put stuff wherever they want to put it. So to me, if you're looking at potentially a compromise, because it really doesn't have any space that I can see on the east side, because that's mostly the parking lot and more, of course, in the back, it's not going to help him any. And then the west side doesn't have any space. So, I mean, that's the only areas that I can see where there might be some kind of, you know, potential, you know, openness to, to looking at some, you know, additional display options. But I think it, whatever we come up with, if y'all want to change it, I think it needs to be in a defined space that's structurally defined somehow, where you can still see the material, but, you know, it's not just randomly placed wherever, wherever you want to place it.
This is Commissioner Green. I'm inclined to agree with that. As a sideline sort of related, is the property next door to the right of the green building in your display right now, is that, that's an abandoned piece of property? Abandoned building?
That is, that's the old John Deere dealership where operated since nineteen ninety-one till two thousand and seven. And we, like I mentioned, is that we bought the property where we're now, it's now unquestioned from the town of Farragut in nineteen and ninety-four. We used that property for thirteen years to display, to test and demonstrate our equipment. And then we approved that property in two thousand and seven. And you heard about the occupancy permit problem and we negotiated then with the town and one of the reasons we agreed to, to the compromise, if you remember in two thousand and seven, the economy started, started tanking very fast. You had a lot of non-recurring expenses on a new building and everything. I was paying three hundred dollars an hour for attorney to try to help me on this. It got to the point where over and over, you know, we had to do something and I had to spend my time in keeping the business alive during that time. So that's the reason that the compromise was made.
So my question was, is that the building abandoned now?
Yes, it is.
Thank you.
And the, the building, the, the building with the green roof actually was a new built building back in two thousand and seven?
That's correct.
This is Commissioner Myers. I'm going to throw out a couple of observations. First, the property to the east that we're talking about, that's the old John Dealer, John Deere dealership is owned by an unrelated party to Mr. Davis. So I, that is really not part of our discussion tonight. However, zoning and selling farm equipment is part of our discussion. I think what differentiates Mr. Davis from the old Gander Mountain or even the nursery across the street is his display is temporary in nature. He puts it out in the mornings and he puts it up typically at five o'clock in the afternoon, they put all their equipment back inside. And I can't see having a fenced in area, then all of a sudden you have a permanent display area. I think I would rather see the equipment on the, on the grass on a temporary basis during normal business hours than having a bunch of stuff stored out there 24 hours a day, 365 days a year.
I would echo that. I think that the idea of the compromise would, come on, let's look for a permanent sign as a part of this. And also just unblock the sidewalk, except for temporary movements of, of equipment. I think having the equipment on the grass is perfectly natural and it's natural setting. It gives people a chance to go out and test the equipment. This, that has, has the flexibility to put it behind a fence or other, just, it is, it's just counterintuitive to me for this type of use.
Well, I think if you're, all of a sudden you want to go demonstrate or I want to go test drive a, a new zero turn mower, Wayne would have to move seven mowers out of the way for me to drive one because it's back in a fenced in area. Wayne, can you give us, can you give us, give us your thoughts about the sign? Your, your sign, the, the one in the back of the Gator is creating some heartburn for some of us on the commission and maybe even yours truly a little bit. What, what are your thoughts about getting your, a permanent sign installed, obviously either using your old permit that you've been approved for or applying for a new permit?
We could, you know, we can do that tomorrow, start that tomorrow. I have no problems with the sign. What we use that, that's a company owned vehicle, that Gator, and we use that to take to shows and displays and it's got the John Deere logo on it. And it's, you know, we have had an issue with the town about our logos on our company vehicles before and, and was actually summoned to the court and the judge ruled in our favor that we could display, you know, our company logo on our own equipment. So, but yeah, if it's a, if it's a heartburn for everybody, yeah, I'll take it off that and take it off tomorrow.
Well, I think there's a difference to me with a logo that's on, you know, it's the part of the vehicle, the one that's kind of strapped across it like you're showing there and you're kind of, that, that really reeks of temporary. And we've had other instances, talking about precedents in the town, we have not allowed that kind of approach wherever we could, could deal with it. So I'd much rather see a nice permanent sign out there, Wayne, for that.
Yeah, we can, we can do that. We can take the sign off tomorrow. You don't have to worry about that.
Wayne, we'd like to see you get some permanent signage, whether you want to do wall mounted signage on the front of your building or ground mounted signage.
Let me tell you the reason, Noah, that I haven't done the permanent signage. I, I not only sell John Deere's, but as you know, I sell X mark and walkers and other brands. And quite frankly, I've had a discussion with David Smoke about this, is I don't have enough space on the front, on the current signage of ordinances to, you know, do justice to all of my brands. So that's one of the reasons I haven't done it so far. But yes, I can do the permanent sign with the John Deere sign up front, be happy to do that.
Mayor Williams.
Go ahead, Mayor.
Mr. Davis, I believe the name of your company is Farragut Lawn and Tractor. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
That's what your sign needs to read. It don't need to read John Deere or X mark or anything else. It needs to read Farragut Lawn and Tractor. Because that's the name of your company. And, and so regardless of what brand of equipment you sell, then I believe that Farragut Lawn and Tractor would be the way to go on. Whether you do a building sign or a ground mounted sign, that's, that's up to you as long as it meets the requirements that Mark puts out there as far as the sign ordinance. As far as the, the picture we saw with, with a sidewalk block, I don't think that's a good thing to do. I think you need to keep sidewalks open for, for a whole lot of reasons, but I think that would be a, a good practice in the future. As far as your, what's sitting out there, you know, I don't know why you have so much out there, but if you pulled it back away from the road a little bit, I mean, we have basically setback numbers in our ordinance for buildings and, but we don't have anything for setbacks for pieces of equipment or, or vehicles that are, that are sitting in the grass. So if you pull it back some, I think that's where you're getting toward what we're talking about as far as, is some sort of a, a talking point with, with the staff. I know you have to pull it out in the morning and take it in in the evening, but I don't think you need to have all that out there. I mean, if you sell John Deere, you may have a Gator, you may have a zero turn, you may have an X mark mower or, or whatever, but to have, I mean, it looks like a used car lot now and that's kind of what I think gives everybody heartburn when it, when they come by and look at it. So I think if we have a little bit of a give and take on this, I believe that everybody would probably agree that, that that's something that would help both of us, okay?
Well, I agree with that. And matter of fact, if you drove by today or yesterday, you could see the same equipment out there. On this particular day, this picture was taken, the probability is, is what we were doing, we're at to evacuate the entire showroom and clean the floor and polish the floor and we do that once a month. And we, we, we do not park stuff on the driveway except on very, very rare occasions and only, you know, for maybe 15 minutes or so until we can get things done. But yes, I'm willing to work with you anyway to meet your requirements and also give me some flexibility to move my equipment in and out. And the sign issue is a non-issue with me, so I'd be happy to, that thing comes down tomorrow.
Other thing, when you get back close to your building there on each side of your, your canopy, if you're pulling them out to clean the floor or to whatever you're doing, if you can suck them back in there closer to the building, I can understand having them out there, but out near the road, you've got plenty of room on east, on the east and west side of your canopy that you could line them up there. You know, you could soldier them right across through there on both sides. They don't need to be out near the, near the road. That's, I think, what gives everybody the heartburn. I think that type of compromise right there would be probably more in line with what we're looking for.
Oh, that's great. Be happy to do that.
Commissioner Green again. I, I like the approach that Mayor's suggesting. I'm opposed to the wording change as it is because again, that's just carte blanche to put stuff wherever you want. I don't know, Mark, if you can put in some setback or some guidance on, on keeping it back and closer to the building and making it not look so cluttered, I guess is what I'm trying to say.
I'm going to jump in here for a minute just to have a, talk about the, the fact of the matter is there, the definition, I mean, the, the intro of this particular item is retail outlets for the sale of general farm implements and lawn care equipment such as tractors, riding lawnmowers and related accessories, which is very different than what the issues that Gander Mountain had. They're, they've got canoes and those are much smaller and much, it's a different, we're talking about two different products here. So we can still control outdoor displays for other types of stores and like Noah indicated, have some kind of common sense changes here that recognize that general farm implements and lawn care equipment is a little bit bulkier than what Gander Mountain was going to have in their storage area. So I, I'm open to considering certainly some, some language that, that works with what's going on here. Certainly a setback sounds like what Mayor Williams is talking about so that they're not coming closer to the street. I don't know what that setback is, but, but there is, has to be some consideration for what it is he's selling. And are we going to see a general farm implement and lawn care equipment coming into other areas of town? I mean, I get that, we want to make sure that what we're doing is going to, I mean, it carries over to what's, it's not for this specific location, but where are we going to see that? Where would we realistically see that? Because we can try and, and solve every situation, but we kind of have to be working in reality as well. So that's kind of where I am.
Wayne, could you keep, could you keep all the equipment behind the first parking space there on the, if you look at the first parking space on the east side? I don't know exactly what the parking lot setback is, but I mean, if we're trying to establish some, like a visual line, try to keep the stuff behind, if you could, because that comes out a little bit further than that outdoor display area.
Surely we can do that, except there's occasions though that we, the bigger stuff, we have to bring down the driveway and bring it up on the hard surface into the covered porch area to bring it into our showroom. You have a big, big door off the, off the front there. That way it's how we have to bring the big stuff in and out. Now, we don't put real big stuff in the showroom. The biggest stuff we put in the showroom is typically the stuff that you see in your parks and your, your commercial mowing equipment and your Gators and that sort of stuff. Matter of fact, the big tractors, John Deere tractors that you've got, that the town of Farragut uses, we don't put those in the showroom. They're in back where they're permitted by your ordinance. So it's, it's the Gators and the smaller stuff that we pull in and out on a daily basis, but we have to have the flexibility to move them in and out.
Yeah, I, I understand it moving in and out, but I guess if we're trying to define a space where you might just display stuff during the day?
At first, at first parking area is fine, if that's the limit.
It looks like that's about a 40 foot, 35 to 40 foot from the property line, based on my site plan I have here in the office. But you can see a car parked there. I'm not sure if that's the first space or not. It's hard to tell.
Yes, it is.
It's a little closer to Kingston Pike than the outdoor display area. And that way, there's some physical definition to where you need to try to stay behind, you know, for your display.
That's a good, that's a good definition and it's easily done by us.
Okay, Mark, can you, is it possible for you to rearrange this request as far as the wording, the way it suits what we've discussed here?
Yeah, I can take a stab at it and, you know, send it to you all and we might need to workshop it again. I'm not sure. Certainly I think the, it sounds like the Mr. Davis is going to be addressing the sign immediately. I think that's a easy thing to address, it would seem to me. And then just try to keep the sidewalk obviously clear and I can try to put something together. Certainly for a workshop discussion for next time, maybe, maybe for a recommendation. I just, if that's, everybody's in agreement with that, maybe is an approach to deal with this, to make sure that the, the display doesn't come any closer than the, than the first parking space, the outer, basically the south end of the first parking space to Kingston Pike. And then the sidewalk and, you know, has to remain clear at all times. We'll deal with the signage separately and certainly, you know, I could help Wayne with the sign application for both a ground mounted sign and a wall mounted sign. He's allowed to have both. And I think like the mayor suggests, Farragut Lawn and Tractor seemed to me to be what I would put on the ground mounted sign and a building mounted sign because that's the name of the business and that would, that would kind of encompass all the brands that that business, you know, provides for. So I think that would be a good way to deal with that. And then you'd have something you could illuminate or whatever and it'd be out there permanently and wouldn't have to worry about it.
Mayor again, Wayne, I think with 17,000 customers, I think everybody pretty well knows what you sell and where you're at. And so if you've got somebody that drives by and they look up and, and see that ground mounted sign that says Farragut Lawn and Tractor or, or the one on the building, I don't think there'll be any reason for them to think it's anything but what you are, okay?
All right. I appreciate it, Mayor. Thank you.
Any more questions or comments? Anybody on the planning commission have any more questions or comments?
Yes, I do. Point at the first parking place.
I'm not sure if this pointer works or not, frankly. But it's, you can see the car there. I think that's the first parking space. I don't know if you can see that arrow or not.
Oh, yeah. Uh huh. We can see that.
That's roughly where the first parking space is. You come in from Kingston Pike. Again, it looks like it, based on the site plan, it's not necessarily as built, but it's a roughly 35 to 40 feet from the property line, Kingston Pike, not the curb, but the actual property line.
That's about what our setback is, isn't it, Mark?
Well, the parking lot setback really only is 20 feet. And I would normally be okay with that. It's just that I was trying to think of something that would be, you know, a physical marker that you could use so that if we were, you know, trying to make sure that, that they were keeping their display behind something, that it would be, you know, obvious where they needed to keep it behind. So that's, that's the only reason I was, was going by the parking space. But really that first parking space could be 20 feet from the front property line. So I mean, I guess theoretically they could add another space to come closer to Kingston Pike. I guess we just want to get creative to get to the 20 foot setback. And I'm not trying to throw out some kind of way to get around something, but, but that's, yeah, the, it appears that the first space is a little bit further setback than what it would actually be required to be.
Well, it looks to me, Mark, like it needs somewhere, you're going to need somewhere for his customers to park. And can they get around this equipment to park farther towards the back?
Yeah, I'd have to look at an ASB build to see where exactly the, I know there is an ASB build, I just don't have it in front of me.
We, we, we've got a lot of parking spaces on the east side and also in the back too. We're able to handle most of, most of all the traffic that comes in there, except when I get a bunch of landscapers to bring in their trucks and, and trailers at the same time.
Chairman Reed, I think, I think what we're talking about is, is just a, a line of sight point at this, as far as what that first, first parking spot is, a line of sight. I mean, you can do a visual line across through there. I think that's what Mark's getting at as opposed to.
Well, right, right. But if, if he has his equipment parked out there, he needs to, there needs to be a space for the traffic to, to get through it, to get to his parking spot was what I was wondering about.
Well, he won't be blocking the access way with equipment. That's going to be over in the grass area. What, probably what I'll have to do is, you know, I can't really word the language of the ordinance to say behind the first parking space because that could always change. What I want to do is take wherever that first parking space setback is, and that's going to be the number, it needs to be feet that needs to be behind, but we'll know basically that's where you look, you know, when you're assessing whether that display material is behind the line. It might be 35 feet, it's probably going to be something like 35. It's probably going to be something like thirty-five feet from the front property line for that displayed material to be behind. But, you know, I was just kind of pointing out something that would be visual that you could, you know, you could look at it and say, okay, is all this displayed stuff behind this, the front plane of this first parking space? Yes, it is, so it's fine. It's not, they need to move it back.
Uh, Mark, Mayor Williams again, maybe we can, you and I go out, catch up with Wayne there and pull a string and, and measure something.
Yeah, we can. If that's, if that's an approach y'all wanted to go with, then we could certainly figure out how to, what makes the most sense.
I would appreciate that and be glad to have you.
This is Commissioner Myers. Personally, when I'm, when I'm looking at that line and I'm visually drawing that line across the front of his property, that's going to cut out the majority of his grass. I, I think for the staff to be able to wordsmith a text amendment, we ought to just say, well, let's measure something either from the face of curb, from the edge of asphalt, from behind the sidewalk. Obviously, the right of way is something that's, that is fairly consistent, although the right of ways do change a little bit along Kingston Pike with some of the newer parcels versus older parcels. But I, I think more appropriate, maybe to have something like a twenty-foot setback, which we can now build buildings within twenty feet of Kingston Pike. And I think a twenty-foot setback from the right of way would give Wayne a little bit more room to be able to display his equipment. I really, I mean, we're, if we try to draw a line where that first parking spot is, he's going to lose two-thirds of that grass area as eligible area for display. And I, I, I don't think that's achieving the results that either the applicant would like to see or what myself as a commissioner thinks appropriate in this situation. So I think we need to come up with some way to measure. That way we can, you know, we do get enough, somebody else comes to the Town of Farragut and wants to build a tractor dealership. We've got something that is not arbitrary, but is, is very objective in, in the way we measure this.
Well, another way to, another way to do that would be like what we, how we measure special event signs. And we could just say that, and I'm just throwing out this hypothetically, that the nearest part of the display material would have to be, you know, I don't know, thirty feet from the edge of the street or, or the edge of the curbing. So that, you know, that's physical element that anyone can measure from. And we, we could do it that way as well. That would accomplish the same. So that as you're moving across Kingston Pike, you have a line with which you're staying behind that can be easily measured and evaluated.
Well, I, I, I think that approach is completely appropriate. One thing about it, all commercial businesses in this town all have asphalt, edge of asphalt in front of their business. Some of them have curves, some don't have curves, some of them have sidewalks, some of them don't have sidewalks. But I think something that we can always measure from is the edge of asphalt.
I agree with Noah on that because if you look at this building, it does not sit square with the road. It's at, it's at a skew, it's at an angle. And again, if you did measure from that first parking spot, like Noah drew the line, and that would, that probably wouldn't work very well.
I like the idea where the mayor and Mark and Mr. Davis go out and see if they can mutually agree on a, on a proposal on distance or whatever. And I have a feeling that if Mr. Davis and the mayor and Mark are all in agreement, that probably the rest of us can see fit to climb on board. Thank you.
Sounds fun to me.
Sounds great to me.
Any more questions or comments? And Mark's going to have something either next, within the next couple of months with this?
Well, I mean, I'll definitely have something as, at least for a workshop next month. I mean, in November, you know. But try to meet with, with Wayne out there in the next couple of weeks for sure. And maybe next week, hopefully. And just talk through what makes sense and then try to figure out that language, so we'll do that.
Okay, we'll, we'll move on to approval of utilities. Number eight, do we have any utilities, Mark?
I do not have any additional utilities, no.
In that case, item number nine, citizens forum.
Mark, before you start asking, reading, I just wanted to let you know, I'd like to comment after the reading in of the
Okay. I have two letters this evening under citizen forum. Much shorter than last time. The first one is from Ashley Kendall. I live at 12804 Pecos Road in Saddle Ridge subdivision, and I'm very concerned about the connection of the new Ivy Farms subdivision to the existing Saddle Ridge neighborhood via Pecos Road. Pecos Road is one of the longest and straightest, soon to be even longer and stronger streets in our neighborhood. Speeding is already a problem. I fear adding any more length to the road without traffic calming measures would increase the potential for excess speeding and careless driving. To make matters worse, Pecos is a road with many, many children living on it. Yet there are no sidewalks providing a safe place to walk. Because of the straight, flat nature of Pecos Road, children from all over the neighborhood congregate to ride bikes, scooter, walk dogs, et cetera. It seems strange that the new section of the road from Ivy Farms will be equipped with sidewalks, yet will connect to a sidewalkless road while bringing more traffic all at the same time. There are many potential solutions ranging from and not limited to a gate or removable bollards for pedestrian traffic only, a narrowing of the road at the connection point, a raised speed hump at the connection point, et cetera. Hoping that the town will visit this issue and work with the residents of Saddle Ridge to come up with a solution, keep all of us, especially the children, safe. Second letter is from Tim Sayers. Dear sir, madam, following are my comments that I would like to have written at the October fifteen, twenty twenty third municipal planning commission meeting during the citizens forum portion of the meeting. I'm also requesting that they, and the attached photo, which I did email to you all, be distributed to the members of the MPC prior to the meeting. My name is Tim Sayers and I live at 12812 Pecos Road, Knoxville, Tennessee, three seven eight three four, which is located in Saddle Ridge subdivision. These comments reflect the position of myself and my wife Joyce. This month, I only have one topic to address. The topic is the continued grading work being done in Ivy Farms. In particular, some of the portions that are adjacent to the Saddle Ridge subdivision. The current work being done at Ivy Farms is what I believe, in what I believe to be lots thirty-five, thirty-six, sixty-four, sixty-five, sixty-six, and sixty-seven is not in keeping with the grading of the adjacent lots in Saddle Ridge. These lots are adjacent to the lots in Saddle Ridge that are at the end of Aladdin Lane and Lodge Pole Lane. The grading in this area in Ivy Farms is significantly higher than the grading in this area in Saddle Ridge. Some areas, it appears to be at least twelve to fifteen feet, not more higher. Please see the attached pictures. I request that the picture be shown on the overhead projector during the NBC meeting and also distributed to the members of the MPC. While the photo is able to convey some sense of the difference in the lot heights, really get a sense of the difference that needs to be seen in person. If the members of the MPC have not been to the end of Aladdin Lane, Lodge Pole Lane, see how unsightly the grading of this lot is, I'm requesting that they come and take a look at it. They also need to imagine how much more unsightly this, this area will be when two-story houses are built in these lots. Not only is it unsightly, but it appears that it would wreck stormwater runoff into Saddle Ridge. This grading is similar to the unsightly grading that was done, I believe it's lot thirty-two in Ivy Farms, which is adjacent to the end of Pecos Road and Saddle Ridge. Fact that the Town of Farragut approved the grading of the Ivy Farms property sends the message that the plans were not thoroughly reviewed and understood prior to approval or that the Town of Farragut Good All Homes have little no regard for existing residents in Saddle Ridge. While we will never know, I have to guess that this type of grading will never be allowed if it was a lot adjacent to the homes of the MPC members. First, the Town of Farragut to consider the old phrase that says, don't forget, we brought you to the dan, brought you to dance the residents of Saddle Ridge that have paid taxes and supported the community for years being left in the dust in regards to Ivy Farms project. I mean that both figuratively and literally. Residents of the Town of Farragut are at a serious disadvantage in fighting issues that are taking place in Ivy Farms. Mayor Williams and Vice Mayor probably clearly do not support the residents of Saddle Ridge. In addition, the Vice Mayor is also one of two aldermen for Saddle Ridge, so we have lost that voice being able to fight for us. Since the mayor and vice mayor are not supporting residents of Saddle Ridge, I believe that position also dissuades the other members of the MPC for supporting residents of Saddle Ridge. If that was not enough, the other alderman for Saddle Ridge, Scott Meyer, has chosen to not become engaged on behalf of the residents of Saddle Ridge. Town of Farragut and Good All Homes still has a chance to be good neighbors and listen to the voice of the people who are residents of the Town of Farragut and are neighbors of the new development on Ivy Farm property. I am once again asking the Town of Farragut and Good All Homes to be good neighbors in regards to activities and issues related to the Ivy Farms development. I appreciate the time and effort with the MPC members to vote to the MPC. I also appreciate the opportunity to submit the comments to Tim Sayers.
I, I think, I'd like to address the, the grading issues that Mr. Sayers is referring to. The, the property developer on Ivy Farms has got to handle the stormwater issues, the drainage. There's certain standards that we require of them, but we cannot tell them exactly how they have to handle their stormwater drainage. And if you look at the topography on the Ivy Farms, all that, all the water that comes across it is draining over towards Saddle Ridge. And they're grading to, to maintain the stormwater and manage the stormwater on their property. Now, I'm not a civil engineer, so I know I can't fix. I do understand that while we require them to handle the stormwater, we cannot tell them how to handle the stormwater. We can't say, well, you don't stormwater plan, you got to come up with a new one. If it does what it's supposed to do, I don't want the house that they're trying to set up. And I think that's an issue everything I just said in more professional speaking, to defend myself because I'm tired of people just dragging my name through the mud for things that I refuse to compromise on. I will not compromise on our subdivision regulations and I will not compromise on our comprehensive land use plan. That is not something we can do. And I remind this whole body, I have a road going behind my house on Ivy Farms. It's twenty-five feet from my back property line and it's going to serve a hundred and eighty homes. So please don't tell me that I'm not impacted by this, the, the construction here. And I have just as many dusty days as everybody else as they, they're dealing with moving, constantly moving dump trucks now to take dirt off of this, this property. So I'd like to remind you of all the things that I have done for Saddle Ridge. When I first got elected, I was the one that, that stood up in HV, the Harden Valley Middle School rezoning meetings to call attention to the fact that we were still zoned for Harden Valley Academy and we did not want to be zoned for Harden Valley Middle School. And I pointed out all of the, the many years where we were underutilized in Farragut High School because of their overzealous of rezoning us over to Harden Valley Academy. I fought for a design exception for Union Road from twelve-foot lanes in a forty mile per hour design speed to eleven-foot lanes in a thirty mile per hour design speed. That took a lot of pressure of the frontage of Saddle Ridge. I advocated for the removal of it roundabout when the first design occurred. And I also found the easement across the street from, on Union Road from their HOA properties that relieved what was going to end up being a retaining wall and destruction about half of their tree-lined area. It put the, I reached out to Ellen Zaviska to make sure putting that trail in the easement across the street was to their, to, to the pedestrians' benefit. It helped us align Union Road with Fleana Road, which makes it safer for Saddle Ridge residents to travel on that road. And their, the frontage of their I meant to work examining process for farms, construction vehicles using Pecos Road. And I advocated for the cul-de-sacs designed to be placed in the Ivy Farms road that connects to Pecos Road so that they would limit how many residents in Ivy Farms were traveling into, on, into Saddle Ridge. So clearly, I've done a lot for Saddle Ridge to try to advocate for what I can advocate for. But it, it's never going to be enough because unless I'm willing to compromise a land use plan and compromise the subdivision regulation that they don't like, then I'm not doing enough for Saddle Ridge. I would do all the things they want to do and they don't want, they don't want to acknowledge that they moved onto a street that dead added it onto a farm it was always intended to connect through. Before one house was built, that road was intended to connect through to future development in Ivy Farms. And that's what it's doing. So I can, that's all I had to say. Commissioner Myers, can you give us a little bit more feedback about what I just said about the stormwater management? Or maybe, Mark, you can clear that up?
Well, I mean, quite frankly, as, as long as their civil engineer designs within the standards that the Town of Farragut requires, they have a, an approved, in assuming it follows the plans that we approved, they're doing it appropriately. Obviously, there are some grade changes that are concerning some folks over there. The, the silt issues that happened earlier this summer, I mean, those are not acceptable. And the, the town cannot, doesn't condone, you know, anytime the silt leaves the site and stabilization issues, the developer and the builder has to deal with those issues. But as far as grade changes and, and they're meeting the design requirements that we set forth in our stormwater ordinance, that they're eligible to, to design, to build exactly what was approved, which was, was reviewed for compliance.
And by design requirements, Noah, you're talking about the, the requirements to manage the, the amount of stormwater, where it's going and, and keeping it on site. Is that, that's what I'm trying to get at?
Well, you can't keep all of it on site, but you have to detain it. And so what you have to do is you, you have to make sure your post-development discharge does not exceed your pre-development discharge. So you can't exacerbate the velocity of the, of the water. You're still going to have the same volume of water that is going to go, but you have to slow the water down. And obviously, an area close to Saddle Ridge is an area that topographically made the most sense and it was chosen as the, as the area for, you know, a stormwater feature, the area for, you know, a stormwater feature, which normally is what we call a detention pond. And so what it sounds like, and I cannot remember the stormwater plan on that particular neighborhood, but being that Pecos Road is down at the bottom of the hill, that, that's where the stormwater detention pond is going to be built and located. The, the benefit to a stormwater detention pond is they're the quietest neighbor you're ever going to find. So for me, if I have a stormwater detention pond next to me, now the construction obviously is a hassle when it's, when that's going on. And, you know, some of the, some of the, uh, the flooding that's occurred and so forth, hopefully that's been corrected. But, um, you know, it's about as good, you know, it's about like being backed up to open space. It's, it's a pretty darn good neighbor and pretty desirable when you go to sell your house because, you know, you're not going to have another neighbor sitting on that stormwater detention pond lot.
Well, that's not, that's not their concern. Their concern is if you look at Saddle Ridge, you have, uh, they have, you have Pecos that comes through, and then there's three, I think, three cul-de-sacs up. Um, and they're seeing a big grading difference between where their houses sit and where, uh, how they're grading up. Um, and, and my understanding is they've got to grade up because otherwise don't grade up tall enough.
Am I the only one that's
Water is just going to where the house is and into Saddle Ridge.
Louise, I apologize.
No, no, you're not the only one.
If my kids are losing all my bandwidth, or it's your bandwidth, but one of us is losing some bandwidth. I, I've struggled during, uh, part of your presentation.
I'm having trouble with Louise. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, what we do from a review perspective, just like Noah and Louise was talking about, we, you know, they have the, the applicant hires design professionals to produce a plan that, you know, would meet the, the requirements. Um, they have to look at the whole property and how everything fits together with the grading plan. Um, in, in the case of some of these lots, it's true that there is a, there is a, you know, a pretty good difference of grade in a few lots there along that interface. Um, but that was, um, really in relation to other, the whole site of the Ivy project and how, you know, they have to fit the, the stormwater system in, in that entire development. Um, they have to look at, you know, getting the water off the streets, draining it, adjacent properties, um, you know, just the whole, the whole project, uh, to make sure that, that the water is, is going to be directed properly and, and not create any issues. Um, so, you know, that, that is an area that would be landscaped. Um, and, uh, it's, it's something that, um, perhaps we could, we could try to, uh, to work with, uh, with Goodall and see if they can, and add some landscaping at the top of the, of the slopes, if, if it would work out with their, with their plan up there, in addition to material that would be added in the buffer strip, which would be at a lower, at a lower grade. But that's something we could certainly, um, you know, ask of Goodall and see if, if there's an opportunity to do something like that.
I might shed, shed light a little bit on this, and, and I've not been back into that farm because it's, it, it, I don't have any rights to go back into that farm right now while it's under construction. But what I suspect is happening, and we're going to see more of this with production, large production builders, is these large production builders require the developer to put each individual lot, um, on certain elevations. So basically, those lots are pad-ready. And what that requires is it requires more mass grading than what the town of fairyt historically is used to. Most of our subdivisions over the past 30 years, basically the grading occurred within the right of way and maybe some slope easements or slopes on both sides of the right of way. And then when the builder would come in to build a house, the builder would determine, well, am I going to put a slab here? Am I going to put a crawl space here? Am I going to put a basement here? And then the grading that occurred on the lot, which are, these lots would be, uh, basically touching the adjacent neighborhoods, the grading is then done when the house is built. And what's different with Goodall and Saddle Brook to a certain degree is they do all the, a lot, the majority of the grading on the front end, and they get these houses where they're slab-ready. So on lots that were never previously eligible for a slab, when I say eligible, they didn't have flat topography, all of a sudden they mass grade, and they put all these lots on, basically slab-ready, so they don't have the expense of a crawl space, and they don't have the expense of a basement. And therefore, you, I think that's probably where you're getting these significant grade changes. And yes, if part of it has to do with the drainage, to be able to get appropriate drainage either to the street or to the back of the lot, down the, the side lot lines. But I think what we're really seeing here is a difference in style of what the big production builders want versus the, the builders that have built historically in the town of fairyt, which were smaller builders, and they would build onesie, twosie here and there, and they would grade each lot individually as they were getting the, the lot prepared for a foundation. I think that's the big shock that everybody's seeing. And quite frankly, as a planning commissioner, we probably ought to get more used to that, this type of mass grading going on, because as these production builders, uh, compete with each other, they have to find all the economies of scale and try to do all the grading on the front end, because quite frankly, it, it equates to savings in dollars.
Uh, thank you, Noah. This is Mayor Williams. Uh, I first want to address, uh, Mrs. Kendall and really Mr. Kendall as well. Uh, I'm, I'm a little confused about the speeding on a dead-end street, but, uh, I don't live there, you do, so you, you're aware, aware of it more than probably most people. But, uh, this road's not really ready yet to say that, uh, we need to look at traffic calming. Uh, if it's such that it becomes necessary, then the traffic calming, uh, application can be, uh, applied for and, and, uh, it can be definitely studied and, and, uh, and we'll probably come up with some sort of a, uh, a, a solution. Um, one other long-term solution would be for the children not to play in the street. Uh, if, I think there's a couple of other cul-de-sacs that might be a better choice, uh, for children to play if they cannot play at the recreation area. To Mr. Sayers, uh, I don't know if, uh, I think most of us were not able to hear what Vice Mayor said, but, uh, uh, for you, that your alderman and your vice mayor and your mayor have supported Saddle Ridge in every way until you asked us numerous times to not connect the secondary entrance of Ivy Farms subdivision to the designated connection on Pecos Road, which is totally against our subdivision regulations. We, we, we have to do that. Uh, I do know about construction, I think, uh, and I'm sure the Vice Mayor does too. She's got, got it going on her backyard. I've got it going on across the street from me in, in Brookmere. I live in Sugarwood, right across from Sugarwood's Brookmere. We've been eating dust for a year now, and we're probably going to eat it for another year. So it's part of what happens when, when you have a farm that gets built right beside you. I knew that when I moved in. I knew it was going to eventually happen. It's happening, and it's happening with you guys. And, uh, it's a bad deal. Uh, my neighbor is more livid about it than anybody because it fills his pool, pool with, uh, dust and which turns into mud. And I'm sure the Vice Mayor has the same issue that he does. And, uh, it's, it's a constant battle to keep your cars clean. If it's outside, it's a constant battle to keep your, your house clean. Uh, but, uh, again, I was aware of it when I moved in, and, and I think you, you folks are aware of it now. So I'm sorry. It's, uh, it's part of what happens when you live next to a big farm type of property like that. It eventually sells. It's going to be happening in other parts of our town eventually. Uh, there's three or four more big prop, uh, pieces like that that's going to happen too. And, and we'll be hearing the same thing from them in the future. So I'm, again, I'm very sorry, and I'm, I'm sorry that you feel that way, uh, about your, your mayor, your vice mayor and your alderman. But, uh, we, we have no ill will to you at all. It's just, uh, we have to follow what's put in front of us, as the Vice Mayor said. And it may not be popular to everybody, but it is what we have to do as a planning commission and as a mayor and alderman. Thank you.
And I can, um, attest to all of that too, with having, living with Bridgemore in my backyard. Uh, they've been doing this for probably 10 years or so. And, um, it's something that we've just learned to live with and, and, uh, learned to live with the dust. Uh, also causes allergy problems. But, um, it will be a beautiful neighborhood behind us when it does finish. Um, is anybody got any questions or comments further at this point?
Motion adjourned.
Mr. Myers, I'll second.
Okay, meeting is adjourned.
Thank you, everyone.